Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, June 26, 2018. Executive session came out a few minutes ago. Roll call, please.
All five selectmen present this evening. Nobody else is here.
Yes, they're not here. They were here.
He might be back, but they're not here.
Okay. Mr. Sanborn, how would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? See, you show up, but we can make you work.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the right of the United States of America and is driven by religious standards, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements.
Tony?
None.
Mary?
Um, nope.
Peter?
Uh, just that the save the date has gone out for the second annual Meet Me at the Tremont Event. Tickets will be available soon this year. Uh, there's gonna be a 50's kinda rockabilly sort of band. Allen knows because they did the entertainment for the car show, did 50's classic rock and stuff like that.
You doing those guys?
Huh?
You doing those guys?
I don't know them, but they, I know that they did, yeah, that's the same band, yeah.
You guys will love that.
Uh, this time, instead of our judging contest, there's gonna be an actual potter out there making pottery. And, uh, the food will be provided by the Minkel Brothers Catering. So, it's a little bit different, but it should be a fun event. That's August 25th from 5:30 till 8:30. And I think that's all I've got.
Patrick?
I have, uh, I wanna let everybody know, this is an announcement, that verification program for the Assessors' Office has resumed and data collection, collectors are out there working. They are currently in the Shangri-La, West Wareham, Little Harbor, and Cranberry Highway area of West Wareham. Uh, so, you be aware that they're out there and that they're snooping around. They do have identification. If anybody needs to know who they are, they'll have an identification badge. You can check if you're, you're still uncon- if you're still concerned, you can pick up the phone and make a telephone call. And they'll be glad to tell you who, if they are truly, uh, one of the collectors. Okay? Uh, other than that, I guess, well, we have fireworks, right?
Yeah.
July 7th.
July 7th. Evening is July 7th. They start around 9 o'clock. So, that's gonna happen this year. And I think that's about it. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Uh, the Wareham Historical Society has their annual July 4th Fair. Hopefully, the weather will be good. Right now, it's a little iffy. The fair goes from 8 o'clock in the morning till 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Also, in conjunction with the, uh, fair is a car show over at Tremont Ale Facility. That starts at 10:00 AM, adds to 2:00 PM as well, um, on July 4th. We will not be here, uh, basically on the 3rd. The board's gonna take a day off 'cause of the holiday. I wish everybody have a good 4th. Please be safe and stay out of trouble. Thank you.
Okay, board comments?
Tony, any questions? Mary? Peter?
No, I'm good tonight.
We've had, coming into the board, um, people having complaints, issues with neighbors, et cetera, other things. Just so you know, the Board of Selectmen, uh, I'm not lawyers, even though Peter is one. Uh, we can't sit there and solve issues between residents and stuff. We're limited in what we can do by charter and bylaw. Uh, if you're gonna get a hold of something, we'll try and help you. But please don't tell us you wanna sue the town if you can't get what you want, because we have to stop immediately and can't even talk to you anymore. So, you're defeating the purpose of contacting us. Uh, we also need stuff written. We can't just send a phone number or a quick email with no name, 'cause we can't act on that as well. It just seems to be, during the summertime, I think people's, um, patience get a little short and things get a little out of hand. So, let's enjoy ourselves.
Citizens' comments.
Yes, Mrs. Slaven.
You know who that is, right?
Yes, the gift that keeps on giving.
Come on down.
Never mind.
A whole week.
It's a good thing we don't talk.
Sandy Slaven. Um, I went through Marion the other day on Route 6. I saw this very neat new speed limit sign. Underneath it was a solar-powered display that showed your speed. I thought that was a neat addition. You're coming down the highway. It's on Route 6, so the question is, did the state put it there, or did Marion buy it and put it there? And I've asked the person who is in the note to answer me, and he hasn't yet, so...
Normally, we don't. But what happened is Representative Bill Strauss from Atapoyson worked some kinda deal with Mass DOT, 'cause it is a state road. Uh, and Marion got two signs, actually. So, I've already contacted, uh, Police Chief John Walczak to see if we have any use for similar type of signs that are permanently mounted. He'll get back to me, and if that's the case, then we'll go ahead and contact Mass DOT and ask for a similar favor.
Now, if anybody gets on Route 6 on Marion, take a look at it. It would be great addition to Cranberry Highway where the speed limit is 35, and if you don't do 50, you're in the way. Um, I have a question. Several months ago, we had an issue with train whistles. Was that ever resolved?
They're still blowing.
I know that, but there was, there was an issue over the loudness of it. Was that ever?
They're still blowing loud.
They're still, they're still blowing loud. There's still a problem. There's people still complaining. So, it has not been resolved.
No response from Mass DOT rail. We've, we've actually reached out.
Exactly. We have no response from anybody.
Next, dear.
Okay. The last one was, can somebody tell me who owns Tremont Ale?
Who owns it?
Does the town own it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Then what does the Redevelopment Authority have to do with it?
The article that, uh, the acquisition article back in 2004 said that, uh, the property was to be controlled by the Board of Selectmen, or at the time, I believe it was the EDIC. The Redevelopment Authority is the successor in interest to the EDIC, and the Board of Selectmen voted to transfer control over to the new Redevelopment Authority.
So, Redevelopment Authority has control over that site?
That's correct.
Not the town of Wareham?
No. The selectmen still have control over the site. But we have given our, our control temp- in, in, as long as we like what's going on, we've given it to the Redevelopment Authority.
But it's no longer under the control of the town of Wareham. It's under the control of the selectmen and the Redevelopment Authority?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
It was, well, the selectmen are the town of Wareham in terms of controlling town property.
I'm, I'm just...
We stand in the shoes of the town. We make the decisions.
Okay. I was just looking at an CPA article that was submitted, and I was confused as to who should've submitted it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No. All right. Next up is appointments. Into, we have an interview and an appointment of Kirk Constable, George W. Moore. Can you come down, Mr. Moore?
We have a hearing at 7:15.
Uh, all right. So, we, this, we can do this quick, right?
Yeah, we can do this.
All right.
How are you, George?
How you doing?
George Morris.
Wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
I've been a constable for about 39 years. I work out of most of the courts in Massachusetts. Been doing this. This is my, my living. And, uh, I have to come in because the court's been signing all the paperwork for me on the four seas in each case that I do in Wareham, because I'm not appointed in Wareham. So, the magistrate signs everything for me, and then that is an appointment for that particular case. But that's it. It's just, it's just that case. If I get another one...
You gotta go back to the magistrate.
Back in. And I, I have, uh, the Teachers Credit Union in West Wareham is one of my accounts. Robie Gas makes it very difficult that if you get to...
You're doing a lot of collections cases?
Lot of, lot of capiases. Uh, I do evictions for Robie. Lot of...
Any questions of the board?
No, except...
Mary?
No.
Peter?
All right. I move...
Questions? I'm all set. Go ahead.
I move we appoint George W. Moore, 27 Highview Drive, Felmouth, Massachusetts, to, to, as a constable for the town of Wareham, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Very good. Second here. Any questions in the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
Yep.
Patrick made the motion. Peter made the second.
Paperwork should be ready for you in the office tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next. Uh, let's see. We have Beach and Tourism. Oh, yeah, let's do the hearing. Let's do the hearing, because 7:15, right?
Need a motion to open.
Yep.
Move to open the hearing on the application of Glen Cove Hotel LLC for year-round common virtual all-alcoholic beverages licenses, a public amusement license for weekdays, and a public entertainment on Sundays license.
Second.
Tony?
Roll call.
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
Alan, yes.
All right, hearing's open. All right, so this is an application by Glen Cove Hotel LLC, DBA Glen Cove Hotel, 167 Onset Ave, Onset, Mass, John C. Salerno, for, um, for a new license for all-alcoholic and, as well as an entertainment license for weekdays and Sunday. So, you wanna talk? Tell us what you got, John.
Uh, yeah, John Salerno from Onset. Um, to my right is my, gonna be my new chef, Abe Duval, and also is Crystal Sibella, who'll be the new general manager for the hotel. It's a 14-room hotel, fully furnished with, uh, you know, full showers and everything in all the rooms. Uh, it has a dining room with 130 on the first floor, and it has 80-room capacity for a lounge in, in the basement. Um, it's been fully renovated. Um, it's been updated with a new sprinkle system. Uh, it has a new fire-wire system. It has a, a five-star post-service elevator throughout the building. Um, it's gonna be open all year round. Um, it's gonna be open 7 days a week as well. Um, we'll be doing dining on the first floor. There'll be dining in the lounge as well. Um, we will cater to special events as well on the, in the, on either room, depending upon the clients. Um, and, uh, it's pretty much it. I mean, it's been a, been a, much of an adventure, but it's, it's done.
It's been a long time coming. Tony, any questions? Mary?
I'm, I'm excited to see what it looks like. I was over there a lot last year in Marie's Garden.
Yeah, I do have some questions about the entertainment. What's, where's the entertainment gonna take place exactly in the facility? What hours are you looking to do it? What's the nature of it? Is it, you know, live amplified music? You know, those sorts of things.
The, there won't be any outside entertainment, as prior to where there used to be. Um, there is a little outside court area that we'd like to utilize for outside activity, just to sit and look at the water and be outside. Um, but everything will take place inside. The first floor, dining room, there may be music there. There's a wedding or something, and there'll be instrumentals. Um, the lounge as well will have music, um, and bands as well. Um, it's contained, and it's not outside. It's not loud, uh, you know? So, I think, coming from where it used to be, the situation that was there before, where there was a lot of outside activity, and it was, it was different, you know? It was, it was loud. The neighborhood was disturbed by it. I understand that. We wanna be a good neighbor. That's why we're trying to keep everything inside.
Okay. Yep. All right. Yeah, no, that's what I was concerned about, is the noise. The last time we had a place there, the noise was traveled all the way to Burgess Point, all the way to my house on Jefferson Shores. It was, it was pretty bad. It could, but like they're saying, a lot of it was outside. Um, there is a noise by law I just want you to be aware of, and, uh, you know, the police will hold you to that by law as far as noise is concerned. So, as long as we, uh, understand that, I, I don't really have an issue, so...
John, on the piece of property right now, it's in the middle where the garden and stuff is. That's come, you're gonna convert that area?
Yes, we've petitioned already for that. Um, we've got approval. We would like to put a two-story structure there as well. We're gonna put a house back there where there used to be a house when they, that's not, it's in Onset Center now. They picked it up and rolled it down the hill back, I think it back in 1989, but to put the pool in. Uh, but we wanna put a structure back up, uh, with a full basement and, and suites for the hotel as well. And I think that will help too with the noise, um, bring another structure in.
The building to the left that also came with the property, is that gonna be used, or you're just gonna rent that out?
Um, that was sold at sale. I don't, we don't own that.
You didn't buy that one? Okay.
So, the old Wicked's Pub that was eventually developed into a pub, that is a, a private residence now.
Great. Uh, last thing, uh, there was an issue again with a former owner, which is not your responsibility or anything else privately, uh, where they were having some issues when they had entertainment and stuff. Late at night, people would be leaving there, and they'd be getting kinda rowdy is the best way, outside the building, and it was affecting the residents. So, I just make a note that when you're doing whatever you have to, if you're gonna have a particular band that might bring a lot of crowd that may be noisy, you might wanna consider getting a police detail when necessary.
Yes, and I, 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 I'm, I, we're gonna be adamant about when people leave the building, that they leave respectively, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll watch our perimeter and watch our areas people leave. We won't be just letting people go, and nobody outside watching what's going on. 'Cause that was a problem before. I, and I, I witnessed it.
Yeah, 'cause we have a very enclosed area, and residences, you know, it's gonna be a very little parking, et cetera, so it's all... Appreciate it. I have a lot of faith in what you guys will do.
One other question. Um, I don't have any hours, exact hours. I have to have hours for the, for all the days. Do you have hours that you're...
Yeah, it's in, it was in my application. Um, it's, it should be there. I don't know why you don't have it. It's gonna be open all day till 12:45, and everyone, I would lash, I think, the normal hours that you'd have. It should be there. I don't know. Patrick, I don't know why.
There's no hours here. There's no hours on the permits either.
It's in the town application. I don't know why it's not there.
They looked through it.
What are you looking at, the AB/CC form?
It's only 2,000 pages.
It's in, it would be in the town app.
It should've been on the license, too.
I could provide it if you have it, but...
We'll have to make sure it gets on there. Yeah, 'cause it has to be on the license. It has to be posted.
Fill that out, right?
Uh, there's, I, I'm gonna need your hours, John. John, I don't, there's nothing in here that tells that the hours...
Is that the state or the town app that you're looking at?
It's all of it. It's not here.
Oh, it's, I don't know why you don't have it. You should. It was filled out and passed in. 'Cause I, Janet and I went over that specifically.
Let's see what it says. Yeah, hold on. Let's see what this page says. See attendant. All right, here we go. Annual all-pouring alcohol license, Monday through Sunday, 8:00 AM till 1:00 AM. So, they're all 1:00 AM every day.
Yes.
Is what it says. How about the entertainment? Is the entertainment the same?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, so, accord, you gotta follow state law, which I think last four is, what, 12:30 or something?
12, yep.
Okay. All right, so, so it's going to be 10 to, so it's gonna be 10 to, and we gotta put this on the license, 'cause it has to be on it.
It's eight, right?
Has to be on there to be legal. Okay, and, uh, the premise, this design was there, so I did look at that, so we're good. All right, so we're good. All right, so I move we approve an all-alcoholic license as well as entertainment on...
One second.
Oh. Oh, the public, yeah.
You got the hearing.
Sorry.
That's right. We didn't even close the hearing.
Anyone in favor of this particular license wants to come up and speak? Please come up. You'll introduce yourself to everybody.
William Scott. I'm on about a 15 Ocean Avenue. And I just wanna appear in favor of this app. I know the family for 25 years. They've done a lot of good for the town. Um, they feed us and keep us warm when the power's going out. And, uh, I am right behind the building, so any noise or anything like that would be, would affect me, and I'm confident that that won't be a problem, so...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Anybody to speak against it? Oh, you, you in favor, sir? Come under. Let, yeah, let everybody come.
Didn't put his hand up first.
Rick Boucher, 24 Carlton Street, Onset. Um, I'm in favor of this project for a number of reasons, not the least of which is it's an excellent example of preservation without using community preservation money or any kind of tax money whatsoever. I live close enough to the premise that I well remember the noise from the outside entertainment before. If I was downwind, it was like it was in my bedroom, live. Um, I know that's not gonna happen this time around. Also, the building itself is an icon of Onset, and I think he's gonna do very well, but for the most part, the, the fact that the building is not sitting there rotting away, waiting for someone to ask for CPC funds is a great advantage to the town of Onset and to the town of Wareham overall, so...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Anybody else in favor wants to speak?
Anybody?
Anybody opposed? None heard? Go ahead.
All right, I move we close the public here.
Second.
Hey, Tony?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Alan, yes.
All right. I move we, um, okay, let's, let's do it together. All right, so I move we approve the all-alcoholic beverage license for Glen Cove Hotels LLC, DBA Glen Cove Hotel, 167 Onset Ave, Onset, Massachusetts.
Second.
With the hours?
Uh, the hours will be 10 to 1:00 AM.
Is that correct?
Second.
That's correct.
Yep, that's correct.
According to your sheet.
Eight. It was gonna be eight.
It was at 8 o'clock, wasn't it?
Yeah, was it 8?
'Cause there might be some...
Oh, let me check again.
I think it was there.
I thought I wrote it.
Yeah, it says 8:00 AM. Sorry.
You can fix that, yeah.
We'll fix it.
8 to 1. 8:00 AM to 1. PM. Okay, 1:00 AM.
1:00 AM.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a whole lot of time, isn't it? You can go back around 8:00 AM again. Okay.
We'll circle.
Tony, second. Okay, any questions from the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstained, 500. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. I'll settle that piece. Next piece's coming up.
Next, I, I move that we approve a weekday, um, entertainment license as well as a Sunday entertainment license for the same time period for Glen Cove Hotels LLC, DBA Glen Cove Hotel, 167 Onset Ave.
Are you gonna do the entertainment the same timeframe?
Excuse me?
You're doing the entertainment the same timeframe?
Yes.
Thank you. Need a second, Tony? Any questions from the board?
That's okay. No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500. Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Thank you. We'll get your license next day or so.
Thank you very much. That has to go to the state now, right?
Yeah, although...
Yeah.
The liquor part, yes.
Liquor part, yeah. I believe the entertainment doesn't, but liquor does.
I don't control entertainment. We do.
Takes, you know, anywhere from 5 to 14 days, usually.
I got you. Thank you very much for all your cooperation.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be a nice piece for the Village of Onset.
Yes, we're excited. Thank you.
All right, I got a bunch of appointments. Uh, first is Francis Gay, 11 Mountain Drive, Wareham, to the Beach and Tours Committee, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions in the board? None heard? Mr. Gay's not here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
Uh, next I have Cheryl Knapp and Patty Neal to the Historical Commission for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021. Historic District Commission, sorry. Yeah, that's right, the District Commission.
Yep.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions in the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
Next, we have Jacob Morrison of 295 Charge Pond Road, Wareham, to, as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any questions in the board? I got, I did receive a letter from the ZBA approving this also. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
Next is Jan Kendrick, 60 Wars Ave, Wareham, to the, to, as a full-time member to the Zoning Board of Appeals, not, a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any question for the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
Next is Christine Legueux, 8 Tar Pollen Way, Wareham, Mass, to the Wareham Cultural Council, uh, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Is this a new person?
Second.
Yeah, they're new.
Are they here?
No, not seen anybody here yet.
They're not here. Okay.
Are you here? Oh.
Oh, you are.
She is here.
I'm sorry. Please come up.
Sorry. You can come up.
You can just say hello and tell us who you are.
Oh.
Don't worry. We don't buy you to do anything bad.
Not the fir-, not the first night.
Yeah, we'll think about it.
Like, like we don't know who you are.
It's, it's Christie, like, not Christine.
Oh, it is Christie, yeah?
Tar Pollen Way, Wareham.
Yeah. How you doing?
I'm well. How are you?
Very good. And how's, uh, how's the husband?
He's good.
There you go.
Did you just wanna tell us, you know, why you wanna be on the board?
Well, I was approached by a member of the board because they were, um, low on membership and asked if I would consider it, and I said yes. I'd love to.
Thank you. We appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah, we really do.
What's up?
It's good to see you.
Nice to see you.
All right, you have a great day.
All right, thank you.
Do you have a motion or something?
I made a motion.
You made the motion with...
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. No questions in the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is Kristen, Kristen Lyons of 14 Dana Lane. Is she here? No? Okay, in Wareham, to the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions in the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
All right, next I have Joseph Capello Senior and Craig Schuler. Is that how you say that?
Yeah, Schuler.
Schuler, yeah, right.
Yep.
Craig is not here. He's, uh, out of town. He sent me an email, you know, plus they got a note from the, uh, from the group also, and Joe, I think, is from the VFW, uh, member as well.
And these are both to the...
Moving forward, Ellen, he's not gonna have money.
These are both to the Veterans Council.
Correct.
To a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions in the board? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 500.
Next one, Lawrence Perry to the Board of Health, uh, as an associate member for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019. Come on down. How you doing?
Good. Good evening.
I hear you have quite the qualifications.
Give us some background information on what you do.
Sure. Um, I got my engineering degree back in 87. I worked in the private sector as an engineer, about 12 years. I worked for the town of Lakeville for 14 years as their health agent for the Board of Health. I presently work for the town of Stone, Engineering Department. I was approached recently by, uh, the Health Department in Wareham, saying they had an opening, and my education and background might, uh, be beneficial to the town of Wareham. So, now that my kids have grown up, I figure I have a little extra time and, uh, give back to the community.
That's awesome.
Appreciate you stepping up.
Thanks.
Okay, need a motion?
Well, I can do it again. Lawrence Perry, 14 Windy Hill Drive, West Wareham, to the Board of Health as an associate member for a term to expire no later than June 30th, for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2019.
Second.
Second. Motion by Patrick, second by Mary. Any questions on the board? None heard, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. Thank you very much, get your paperwork tomorrow if you'd like at Town Hall, Selectman's Office.
You two run a hell of a meeting.
Appreciate it.
You two run a hell of a meeting.
Yes, we do, don't we?
All right. Yeah, you can start on that.
Sign away.
All right, next up is the discussion and vote on EMS rates.
Mr. Evans, you want to come up? I don't want to tie you up, and we'll probably take Peter Sanborn to get them done, then we'll do the school, which will take a little while.
Okay.
We're trying to get as much free time out of Michael as we can. Go ahead, David.
Hi, I'm just looking for approval to increase the EMS rates. As you know, we're a user fee department. We have to operate on the money that we take in. So, I'm looking to just do a across-the-board rate increase of all the different base rates of $150, and the other ancillary fees, just going to be a slight increase. The last time we raised rates was five years ago, so with the increased cost of salaries, supplies, fuel, everything else, it's, we need to keep pace with our expenses.
How are we doing on our collection rate there compared to, like, say, five years ago?
The collection rate, we're making more because we are able to take more of our calls with the vehicles that we keep on the road and increased staffing.
Are we running three all the time now?
Two.
One, two, plus the backup.
Two, and a third's backup.
And we got another purchase coming soon?
Uh, yeah, we're looking at an October, November delivery.
Yeah, because the third one is well-used.
Yeah, that's a 2006.
Yes, I remember that for a while, that was our new one for quite a while. Tony, any questions for David? Mary, any questions?
I don't think so.
Peter, any questions?
None.
They go in there.
Patrick, any questions?
Nope.
I never have any questions for any kind of rate increase.
Also, we were looking to have this effective July 1st.
Can do. Patrick gonna make a motion, including that?
I make a motion that we increase the emergency medical services rates beginning July, July 1?
July 1.
As posted, as written in the fold here.
As presented.
Yeah, as written, as written on the sheet here.
All right. Second.
Do it that way.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter. Any other questions on the board still? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, abstain, 5-0-0. You're all set, David, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you want to do the school next?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to do Peter Sanborn real quick.
Blight, blight.
Peter charges us overtime, so we have to take care of him. Everybody else is on salary.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, come on up, Peter. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna say, this says Village Blight in slum, but I'm gonna say the designation of Wareham. Downtown, because I just don't, I totally hate this. What's it mean? It's ridiculous.
It qualifies us for a bunch of grants and things.
It qualifies us for grants to call it blight and slum. It's just terrible language, you know? I wouldn't say the Wareham Village is blight and slum by any stretch of the imagination.
Peter's gonna, Peter's gonna explain this to all of us, just so people know, I talked about this a couple of different times in the last few days. Unfortunately, for about a 10-year period, we've had no change, virtually, in our Wareham Village as far as the properties on Main Street, et cetera, which is quite discouraging. Go ahead, Peter, tell yours.
Sure, thank you very much. The unfortunate terminology needs to be used to satisfy the state and federal government because that's one of the categories under the Federal Community Development Block Grant Act that enables somebody to, enables a community to qualify certain types of projects for funding. So, it is to prevent or eliminate slums and blighted conditions. And in fact, Mass General Law, Chapter 121B, also makes reference to slums, blight, decadent conditions, obsolete conditions, et cetera, et cetera, so the terminology is pretty bad.
Yes, it is.
So, the town had a blight designation that is granted by the Department of Housing and Community Development for a 10-year period that expired in November of 2017. It was initially approved in November of 2007. And there was the desire, I think, by town staff and by the board to pursue a redesignation of this area in order to qualify the core of Wareham Village, basically the Main Street corridor, basically going from Tremont Nail down to Baker Property adjacent to Bessie Park, over to the River Merchant's Way to enable the town to still to use public CDPG funds in the future. So, this is what this effort's about, the town. We put out a request for proposals, retained the consulting firm of J.M. Golson, who has completed this. What you have here that I'm passing out tonight is a very much a abbreviated packet of what's going to actually be going into this, into the state. There, and remarkably, as the chairman said, we have found the same prevalence of blight in terms of individual properties percentage-wise as there was 10 years ago, which is 33 percent. A third of the land parcels and structures in the survey area were rated as blighted. The process was, the surveyors went out, they did a look at, from the exterior, a look and evaluation of the physical condition of every structure and, in some cases, the grounds, the yards, the outbuildings, to make a determination according to prescribed DHCD criteria as to whether the property was in excellent, good, fair, or poor condition. If a property got rated as fair or poor, then it is considered a contributor to blight. And so, a third of the properties ranked fair or poor of an approximate 115 properties in the survey area. So, page 13 shows the ranking of each individual structure of either excellent, good, fair, or poor. The next map on page 14 shows all the properties that were fair, aggregates all the properties that were fair or poor, shown in green. These are the properties that contribute to a blighted condition. So, I don't want to take too much of your time, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. So, there's, the other part of this was also an analysis, the consultant hired an engineering firm, they did an analysis of the infrastructure, obviously with the streetscape improvements, portions of the infrastructure are greatly improved over what they were, but they still ranked nearly half of the infrastructure in this survey area as being substandard. A lot of it's attributed to Merchant's Way and the area north of Chapel Street.
Tony?
When you look at, were you able to get into these structures as well?
No.
Or just visible outside?
That's right, that's the perception of blight. I mean, there are a lot of properties you can look at from the outside and say they're probably in worse condition on the inside, even ones that look fairly decent, but it's really an exterior visual curb appeal or curb lack of appeal evaluation. And it's, it's not a subjective evaluation. The state also gives us specific elements of every structure, the roof, the siding, the trim, the windows, the entries, the porches, structural issues, various components of the building have to be evaluated as to their condition. So, the very last page in this handout is one inventory form. So, this inventory form was done for every structure in the district. So, thank you.
Mary, any questions?
Nope.
Peter?
Not a question, but, but just an observation. Again, this was done in 2007, it needed to be renewed, and that's what's happening here. This is also going to serve as the backstop for when the Board of Selectmen eventually decides which areas of town need to be declared as part of the redevelopment authority's areas in which to work improvements, and also when we go to town meeting to actually vote on the rules for what the redevelopment authority can do in those areas. So, this is, this is also serving that purpose. In addition to providing a mechanism for applying for and applying public funds through the Community Development Block Grant, it's also going to be used heavily by the redevelopment authority.
Patrick?
No, I don't have any questions.
There's actually going to be, I included three maps here. There are about, there are going to be about a dozen different maps, so so even those maps, just for, for references, point of reference in the future, are, are gonna be, could be informative to certain people.
Basically, this is going to give us the ability to take a look at Merchant's Way, again, look at the rivers, part of the area and seeing what we can do. We've already talked a little bit about this, but this piece is really critical in order for us to qualify to go ahead with projects going down the line. Also, which is not on the agenda tonight, which I'm sure you'll be coming back with us soon, is the one for the Village of Onset, which we were concerned that may not qualify, but it looks like you've somehow made the numbers work.
I was going to give you just a brief update on that before I close.
I think that's an important piece as well.
Sure.
We let it slide if you want. Go ahead. Do you want to say anything on that?
Okay, so, the culmination of this would be for you to vote to make this designation, and that is, that is contained in this letter that would be submitted to the state. The state will probably take a couple of months to review this.
We'll need a motion to allow me to sign that.
So moved.
Yeah, so.
To vote the designation.
Second.
Of a slum and blighted area.
Favor?
I can get your signature.
Aye.
Aye.
I can do it now if you want a piece. We got copies here.
Yeah, we got, these are all good, you can sign this. Boom.
It's all yours.
There you go.
So, as was just referenced, a similar effort is going on in Onset Village. It's actually much larger in scale. Nearly 800 properties in the core of Onset Village have been inventoried. We finished sort of a second review yesterday. The consultant did this on their own. Then I went out with one of the members of the consulting team on three different days, and we walked the, every street in the, in Onset from Shell Point to, all, all the way up to the Dummy Bridge and all the way out to, to Heinz Field and Stone Bridge. So, we encompassed the whole main core area of nearly 800 properties. Our evaluation, subject to a little bit more review and refinement, is that 27 percent of the properties could be rated as blighted. The minimum threshold for the state's designation is 25 percent. We still have a large handful of properties we want to take one final, close, closer look at, but I'm optimistic that unfortunately, Onset will also qualify as a, as a blighted area. We expect to wrap that up in August and be back before you probably in late August with a similar final report and a request for the designation. This, I mean, this is a first-time designation, so this would also be good through 2028.
Well, this will also help the redevelopment authority, they'll have quite a bit of work on their plate. And it's nice to see that Onset, even though we've got that number we've qualified for, I believe that the number, if it was 10 years ago, would be a lot higher. There's been a lot of upgrading at Onset in the last 10 years.
Absolutely. Walking every street, you just see the amount of investment that's going on and the number of building permits that are in windows, it's just...
Yeah, the values are moving up substantially.
It's really heartening to see.
Thank you.
From that point of view.
Appreciate it, Peter, coming in.
Thank you very much.
Ken, I have a question for you, how long is, how much time do you need?
I'm sorry?
Ken? Oh, Ken.
Ken, not Kim.
How long do you need, Ken? Time.
Do you have a presentation, anything for us?
Oh, no, just wanted to listen in on this one.
Oh, never mind. Okay.
And there you go.
Let's go to the...
Yeah, exactly.
All right, next is, thank you.
Make sure we take care of them.
Thank you.
Next up, the School Building Committee. Come on down. I don't know that you're all going to fit, but you all can be good support.
They can all fit.
They can figure it out.
No problem.
If you want, I mean, we'd love to have you, whatever.
We got mics over here, too.
Hey, listen, they can fit all those kids in deca's, they can fit in here.
Whoever wants to talk should definitely get in front of a microphone.
Yeah.
I hear we're getting free time from you.
Not really. I believe those mics are on the table to the side of some...
Yeah, those, those are okay too, someone wants to sit over there. Join in.
Get Derek's chair over there, too, if you want.
Good evening.
You might have to turn both lights out. There you go. Otherwise, you won't, won't be able to see it otherwise.
We'll put a copy in with all the stuff. Okay, guys, go ahead.
All right.
Go for it.
Good evening, we just wanted to come before you this evening to give you an update on the Wareham, Wareham Elementary building project. So, it's a while since we were last before you, and there's been a lot of activity since then, and we wanted to let you know what was going on and what's coming up and over the next few months. Perhaps we can start by introducing ourselves. So, my name is Michael McMillan, I'm the School Business Manager. I'm going to start with Chad.
Chad Crittenden with PMA Consultants, the owner's project manager.
Al Quavis, project architect, Montford Hup Architects.
Kim Shaverhood, superintendent.
Joyce Bakayaki, School Committee Chair.
We also have two other members of the School Committee. So, as you know, we have a School Building Committee, which has representative of the Selectmen, also representative of FinCom, the School Committee, staff from the district, members of the public. It's a very big, inclusive committee, and that's been doing all the steering of the project and making all the decisions. But we're going to go through all that in a bit more detail, maybe I'll start, I'll let Chad do the overview of the timeline so far.
All right, thanks, Michael. Thank you for your time again this evening. So, our schedule is exactly how it was over a year ago. Tomorrow is a huge deadline for us, a huge milestone. June 27th is a date we've been tracking for quite some time. We're going up to the MSBA, the Funding Authority, for approval to proceed into schematic design. The submission's been in their hands for a number of weeks now. We've had our preliminary meeting with their Facility Assessment Subcommittee a few weeks back. Very, very good, positive feedback, there's been a little more evaluation. We looked at actually even doing a kindergarten through third grade scenario as part of those discussions, and we ran full estimates, we'll go into that in a second. So, that June 27th date is a major milestone. With the approval from the state tomorrow, which we are expecting, we'll move into schematic design. That means we have estimates right around late September, early October. We are hoping to be at town meeting in October and on a ballot in November. Ultimately, that's our goal. The final MSBA approval comes on December 12th. So, the goal would be to have a schematic design, a project scope and budget agreement negotiated, and obtain their final approval on the 12th. And from there, we're off to the races.
So, just, I would just like to say, so, the MSBA is Massachusetts School Building Authority, so they are providing, well, I think, what's the reimbursement rate now?
We had just over 74 percent, just under 75 percent, actually.
Seven, just, so they will reimburse us for just under 75 percent of allowable costs on the project, so there is a whole lot more calculations going to what they will reimburse us for and what they won't. But 75 percent of what they allow is obviously a huge proportion of the, of the project. So, because they're providing so much money, they make us jump through a lot of hoops. They want to make sure the project does what they want it to do, they have a lot of criteria, so they really put the whole project under magnifying glass. They look at it in a lot of detail and make sure we're meeting all their criteria. And that was the purpose of the Facilities Subcommittee that Chad mentioned to a couple of weeks ago. And then the Board of the Massachusetts School Building Authority is what's meeting tomorrow, and they make the final decision on whether or not we go through to the next step in the project. Shall I go on? Shall I go on?
Yep. So, this is really a recap of what's been authorized under the current funding authorization from the town. The feasibility study is going to be complete as of tomorrow. Remember, we had those two major submissions, the Preliminary Design Program, where we rounded up all the options. We actually ended up studying 17 different options on four different sites. And by study, I mean full site plans, cost estimates. Ultimately, we narrowed down to one preferred enrollment scenario. That's the pre-K through 4 enrollment. And one preferred site, which was the Minut Avenue site. Next step during schematic design is when we really get into the finishes that happen on the building. That's when we really get our first set of full plans together, and we can start to really see how this building's going to look as it gets constructed.
And I'll just add to that. So, a key part of what we've been doing over the last few months is developing the education plan, which looks at how we teach the students and how that fits with the design of the building. So, a lot of the principal and teachers, well, principal and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum have been developing this document, which details from schedules and classes and the subjects that are offered. And all of that has to match with the design so that the design really reflects the education program within the district. And the MSBA is really keen on ensuring that we're designing a building that matches what we're trying to do with educating students. So, that, the design of the building and the education plan, I think from my perspective, have been two of the biggest parts of this process so far, and really making sure that they fit together so that we're designing the right building for Wareham.
So, some key dates up here. That submission went in on May 9th. That Facility Assessment Subcommittee meeting June 6th, and then tomorrow, of course, June 27th. One of our other upcoming major milestones, if we are to be on that November 6 ballot, of course, it's a state election ballot, so we do need authorization from this board here. Other major milestones there, we have a Department of Elementary and Secondary Education submission. That's what DCE stands for. And then town meeting vote would occur in October, ballot question November, and then the Board of Directors, again, meets to vote on the project on December 12th.
So, we're going to go and show you some of the site plans and things like that so you can see what it's going to look like a little bit, although, as Chad says, there's a lot to do. But I just wonder if there's any questions right now on what we've done so far. I mean, I know we're throwing a lot of information at you, and there will be more opportunities over the next few months.
I just wanted to make one observation. I think a year ago, roughly, when this process started, I thought the reimbursement percentage was something around 71%. So, I'm glad that the work you folks have done have paid off in getting it up another 4%. That may not seem like a lot of money, but when you're talking about the sums that are going to be at issue, that the voters of this town will have to approve, having the state pick up another 4% is actually a pretty good accomplishment.
Anybody else want, have any questions so far? On the July 2018 vote of the Board of Selectmen, when will we get back the information from MSBA in order to start to fabricate a ballot question?
So, we are good to go. I think we just needed, we just need a spot on one of your meeting agendas. So, as usual, you can slot us in.
When do you think you'll get us the information?
As soon as we can, tomorrow.
On the vote language, yep. So, we'll have the approval tomorrow by noon from the state. And from there, it's just making sure the vote language is agreed upon.
Yeah, but we still have to go through...
We have to plug it in.
Yeah, plug it in. And we have to have Rich go over it as well. All right, as soon as you can, because we don't meet on the 3rd.
Yeah.
You know, we have Doug, Harry's, et cetera, I think, on the 10th. 10th, I think, or the 19th. Either way, it's a tight month in July.
Yeah, we can provide that by tomorrow, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. So...
Sure, certainly. So, this is a depiction of the site plan at the Minut Forest site. This is the culmination of all the iterations that Chad discussed in terms of weaning it down to one solution. This is considered our preferred alternative. This is what the state has currently for approval tomorrow. So, what you see here is in plan, the orange-brownish building is the school that you see on the site. That's the new school. It would be obviously taking and overlapping what was there before. The bottom, if you see at the bottom where it says "North," that's Minut Ave. To the west is, you know, going up the hill on the Minut Forest site. As you can see, there's parking, there's play fields, both in the front of the building and the existing that will be refurbished. There will be two main entries, one for the lower grades, the pre-K K, and there will be an upper grade entry at the, sort of, the center of the buildings. There are two wings on left and right, which is sort of connected with the core administrative, sort of, community wing, and the next plan will show that a little better. This is the lower floor, which is the pre-K wing with its own administrative entry component to it. It's sort of nestled and sort of controlled independently of the upper grades. Next slide, please. As you can see, there are two wings, one that stacks on top of that pre-K wing, and to the right is the other wing. In those particular cases, there'll be two stories. And we were thinking, you know, you can have a lot of flexibility in terms of how you deal with the grade structure, with the core in the center. As you can see, there's a main administrative for the second entry, cafeteria, gymnasium, music wing. And also, it's the way it's located, so it has access to the rear play areas. The upper floor, which is the next slide, very similar to the second floor. And as you can see, we have this innovation hub centered that sort of controls both wings, and they can be separate. So, they're basically little communities within a larger school in terms of the grade configurations.
So, I would just want to, I mean, we are, as I said earlier, throwing a lot of information at you, but this, what we are showing you here is a culmination of hours upon hours of discussion and design work, both in the building committee itself, but also out of that in subcommittees and discussions with the administration here and the designers. So, for example, the fact that it's on three floors, that took up a lot of discussion. We had about two-floor design versus a three-floor design. And the reason we went for three, well, I just think it's worth highlighting is we took into consideration the cost. So, three-floor is a bit cheaper to build than a two-floor because you have a smaller footprint. We're hoping it will help keep utilities down as well because it'll be more efficient. And it also makes the most of the grade gradation of that site as well because, you know, it is on a hill. So, it did work well for us. But I just wanted to explain, you know, there's a lot of thought that's gone into getting to where we are now. So, I wonder, we're going to actually go into something a bit figures, and I just wondered if anybody had any questions about the design before we do.
Anybody? Go ahead.
So, here are, so I said, we had studied 17 different options at the Preliminary Design Program. Right here, what you see are the options that we studied at Preferred Schematic Report. So, this is the first round of cuts, the projects that made it through. Every single one of those bars that you see up there had three independent estimates placed on it. The far-right bar is actually a pair of decas. We continue to carry that option because you really have to look at, you can't just look at only repairing Minut because at some point in the future, decas is going to need to be addressed as well. Repairing Minut is the bar on the far-left, so when I look at that, you kind of take that bar on the far-right and stack it on top of the one on the far-left, and you see what it could potentially cost to repair those two existing buildings. The green bar that you see there is our preferred solution. And then you see, they're grouped into three major boxes there. So, the far-left side is all the options that would only take care of the Minut Forest school. That's grades pre-K 3 and 4. The middle section of boxes, those six bars there, combine Minut and decas into one building for grades pre-K through 4. And then on the right side, you see two bars grouped together, and that is the additional study requested by the state, sort of the what-if scenario of a pre-K through 3 school. So, what that means is, in that particular solution, we'd be looking to consolidate grades 4 through 12 into the middle and high school buildings. So, Montverne Group in the district, the school department, spent a lot of time looking at those two existing buildings and trying to see if there was any conceivable way that grades 4 through 12 could fit in any combination within the existing middle schools and high schools. Went so far as to program out the buildings as to what they might look like when a new school opens. The answer is, 4th grade is just really, keeping it down in the elementary school is the best option for Wareham. It allows for future growth opportunities, and it far better supports the educational vision of the district. We can jump to the next slide. So, the next slide here is what we call the final evaluation of alternatives. So, the MSBA, in our report that was just submitted several weeks ago, requires that we carry the repair solution, an addition renovation solution, and a new construction solution, all the way through to the final step, because they want to see that these options are developed all the way through. And again, you see on the far-left, that's the cost to repair Minut. On the far-right, that's the cost to repair decas. The decas costs in this particular instance are escalated out five years, with the understanding that if we were to tackle Minut now, decas is probably going to have to wait a few years before it could be approached. The blue bar there that you see is the preferred solution that was selected. That's the three-story, pre-K through 4 option. The total project cost estimate right now is $98.25 million, with an estimated district share of $39.8 million. It's important to note that in those repair solutions, there's no guarantee of reimbursement from the state, and the reason for that is exactly what Michael had stated earlier. The educational program drives everything in the MSBA's eyes. If you don't have a building that supports your educational program, there's no guarantee of funding reimbursement. So, we cannot count on being reimbursed for those two buildings. So, certainly not decas under any stretch of the imagination, because that building technically isn't invited into the pipeline. So, the bottom darker bar is the district share. The top lighter bar is what we might expect from the state for their contribution. That really gets negotiated once we have schematic design complete later this fall. But we're going to do whatever we can to stick to these numbers here.
Yeah. Question on the, what amount of the $90 million is considered reimbursable versus what amount is not, under the state guidelines, the MSBA guidelines?
So, the exact number of ineligible costs, the exact amount?
Yeah. What's eligible for the 75% reimbursement versus what isn't? In the total project cost, if you could just give me those two numbers?
I don't have them right off the top of my head, but I can tell you the costs that are included within that. The MSBA is a number of categorically ineligible costs. One of them that we're certainly going to hit in Wareham is the site work costs. So, they cap site costs at 8% of your building costs. That Minut site, the topography foundations, really any time that you build any project anywhere in the state, you're going to break that 8% number. The urban projects tend to be more in the neighborhood of 12% to 14%. So, there are millions of dollars of ineligible site work costs carried within that number. Moving costs, abatement of vinyl asbestos tile, there's a number of them. The exact amount, so the, I mean, we can really look at it reverse engineer, right? So, if the grant amount is $50 million, and we take the 75% value of that number, really off the hip, that would mean $65, $70 million worth of the projects eligible for reimbursement, which means around $20 million of us not. So, it's a big number. The cost per square foot's another huge one. Right now, the MSBA caps cost per square foot at $333 per square foot. Trends right now in the school construction market are around $450 a square foot. We're carrying $438 for this project. As an example, Middleborough High School, which is on a very similar schedule and just one town away, is $509 a square foot. So, the committee has really done a tremendous job at controlling costs and picking the most efficient design possible.
Yeah. Thank you for that. These are things the public needs to hear, because, of course, they're going to look at something like this and say, "But you said 75%." And, you know, not everybody who is in Wareham is a Nobel Prize winner in mathematics, but they can certainly divide 90 by 0.75 and say, "That's not that number." So, you know, this is going to be part of your process going forward to explain these things as well.
It's very tricky, the way the MSB does it, because they say it's 74%. That's what everybody leads with, but it's only of allowable costs, and we have to remember that. And the MSB does it on purpose because they want to put the pressure on us to keep our costs down as much as possible.
Right.
And I would just add one thing, which is, you know, one of the, what we're seeing is there's an escalation factor in the construction industry. So, with every month it goes by, costs go up.
Yep.
But the MSB doesn't revisit its cost per square foot every month. So, every month we lose, and that's why you see, and people have commented, we're going quickly. But that's because they're trying to keep, you know, avoid that escalation cost and keep the price down.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Not yet.
What else we got?
All right.
You all done with that?
Can I just add, can I just add one thing? Peter, you know, you talk about, on the information out to the public, I've recently become aware that not everyone is aware that we're replacing two schools. And so, that is, you know, I guess I take that information for granted, but I just wanted to get that out there, that yes, we are, this project will replace both decas and Minut at the same time.
Right.
Thank you.
Are you done with the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Lights. I'll say a couple of things. All right, so, all right, so, the committee has worked diligently and hard and has really worked hard to keep costs down. I know, I've been there, although I missed the last meeting. I was stuck in Boston, and that's what happens. And I sent you a text. At any rate, the one thing I want to point out is, the SBA has really put us through a lot of hoops. And in fact, some hoops that nobody's even seen before.
Yeah.
I want to make everybody aware of that. So, there has been a lot of scrutiny on the project, and I mean a lot of scrutiny on this project, not just the typical, you know, project. Which is good, you know, it's good because, you know, I feel that when we were in the meetings and we went through stuff, and we talked about different things, and we threw some stuff out even though we liked it, and we came up with choices and, you know, did things, that that's a good process, that that's a good thing, because, you know, we're coming to reality, we're coming to what we need, and of course, we would like to have this, but we're going to have this. And I want everybody to realize that the committee worked very hard to make that happen. And I know we had the two, the subcommittee that was looking at the part that sort of balances with the curriculum. We had the teachers involved and all that, trying to figure out what they needed for space and where the class was going to be and the whole thing. I mean, it was really, it's a really complicated process, and it's not as simple as everybody thinks it is out there. "Oh, we got a committee, and we decided to spend $90 million." It's not quite. As a matter of fact, it's a long way from that, you know. And I want to thank everybody who worked on the committee hard because they did. And I know it's not over yet, and I know we have a long way before this takes over the goalpost, but you deserve some credit while we're here for the time we've put in, and everybody's put into this thing to get it to where it is at this point. Now, I know it's sort of like an infant, and we still got to get the infants to grow a little bit and get it to where it's got to go. But you deserve a little credit, and I think the board, I have to give it to you and let everybody know that you've done a whale of a job with some of this work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could we also point out that the School Building Committee meetings are public meetings?
Yeah.
The next meeting is July 9th at 5:30 in room 228 of this building, open to anyone who's interested to come and hear.
I love that little widget, whatever they have, where it goes automatically into my thing. I mean, that's cool. I get this little thing, and it says, "Accept this," and I accept it, and it goes right into my, into my calendar. It's cool. I've never seen that before. I just want you to know, I like that.
That's why we have a project manager, that's what he does.
Well, I don't know who's doing it, but it's cool.
She knows where you are, too.
Yeah. That's really cool. I liked it a lot. I think it's important also for the public to understand that it's not anybody in the town government's side on this project. The state makes it very difficult timewise. Obviously, I've had some discussions, and I'm not very comfortable because we're being squeezed such a short timeframe to basically not only put this on a ballot question, but also for a town meeting, you know, warrant article itself. Normally, we never do anything this quickly, but we really don't have a choice because the state has squeezed us. So, everybody has to understand, we're not ramming this through without thought process. We're basically there, or else we wait almost a year, and that year could end up with a 10% to 15% increase in price.
Exactly.
Which we can't afford, basically, at this point. Anybody from the board have any questions going forward? Anybody have concerns about, I'm not going to ask committee how they're going to vote on anything, but is there any issues at all that we need to discuss while they're here? Tony?
No.
Mary?
Nope.
Peter?
I would just say that the two existing schools need to be replaced. They've outlived their service life. They were new when I was a kid. They stopped being new about 10 years after I stopped being a kid, and the school department has been limping along with them for probably 20 years at this point. For whatever reason, the schools that were put up around the First World War, those buildings like this one, held together a heck of a lot better than the stuff that was put up in the '60s. Those buildings statewide are just crap. You see them deteriorating. They're on their second and third sets of roofs. You know, they were still dumb enough to use asbestos in them, and so the issues are just myriad with these buildings that were put up in the '60s. People were hopeful at the time, of course, that they were getting hundreds-year schools, they got a 50-year school, and that's pushing it.
We still have, I think, I said this before, but I want you to realize, at Minut, there's actually a shower, there used to be a shower, right? That's a class in there now or something of that nature, right? Isn't that what we're using that for? Some kind of a classroom? And it used to be a shower. So, you know, it's, it's pretty bad. I mean, you know, if anybody really, if people are really interested and you really want to find out, I'm sure you can call a school, and they'd be glad to take you through there. And when you go through there, and when you walk out of there, I would defy you to say that this school is not at the point where it has to be replaced. You just, I just can't believe that you wouldn't say that. I just can't believe that you wouldn't say that. And the Deacon's school, which in my opinion is in better shape, is still not in good shape. So, there's a lot of work to do. And this is going to save some money, too, in the long run. The cost savings, the fact that you're combining the infrastructure together, is really going to save us some money in the long run as well, which is really a good thing, too, obviously, especially with the declining amount of money we get.
The other thing is, we have all this information on the website. We continually update it.
Oh, there you go.
Would urge people to go check it out. If you have questions, please let us know. We'd be happy to respond and answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much for coming. I'd like to put on a special thank you to Mr. McMillan, who is about to leave us. We know where you're going, so we'll be basically terrorizing you there anyways. But, again, thank you for putting in a hard work here in the town. We really appreciate it.
It's a sad, sad day.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
We're going to do our special ed.
Yep. All right.
You have a couple more things, too, don't you?
Yeah.
You want some money?
Yes.
Can't have it.
Not as much as in the last presentation, but more immediate.
Oh, what's?
Yeah, we got the transfer.
Stabilization.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Do you have any paperwork on that?
There's nothing here.
You have paperwork for us?
Sorry.
There's nothing here.
No paperwork, no money.
Yeah.
And you also got the surplus property, too, to give us, right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
With us is Melissa Fay, our Director of Student Services, so she's going to explain where we're at, and then why we would like this vote.
So... All right, so, we have a, so, at the moment, we have projected deficit in relation to special education tuition. We have allocated funds of 3.2 million, and we have projected expenditure just over 3.4 million, and that's given us this deficit of $183,000. So, where we fund special education tuition from, there's three funds that we're currently using. There's the allocated LEA budget, that's the money that we get from the town. There is, we have circuit breaker funds, which we receive from the state, which is reimbursement for prior expenditure on tuition. And we're also using one of our grants that we receive from the state. We're also using that to pay for the tuition this year. So, in order to meet this deficit, we would like to draw on the stabilization fund, and I'll just, in a minute, say a little bit more about what that is. We also believe we've identified funds within the LEA budget. We've had, we froze our budget months ago, and as a result, we've able to save some money in supplies that we're able to use to offset this cost, and that would resolve this deficit. The reason we're in this situation, so this is our tuition costs over the last five or six years. So, as you can see, in 2013 and 14, we were spending around $2 million, less than $2 million on tuition. Sorry, let me back up a minute here, I'm got carried away. So, what this is about is, this is special education tuition costs. These are for tuition for Wareham students who we are not able to meet their needs within the district. So, they have particular special education needs, and is more efficient, and there are other organizations better able to meet those students' needs, and so, we send them out of district to these schools in order to receive their tuition. So, that's what I'm talking about here. So, it's those costs, and those costs have gone up significantly in the last few years. And we had, it had started, it had gone up, we had this big jump from 14 to 15, and it had seemed to start to level, but then we've had another jump from last year to this year, and that's what's led to the situation where we have this deficit. So, I want to pass over to Melissa, and she'll say a little bit about what's caused this increase this year, but, and I'm just taking this out of order a little bit, but the reason we're in front of you is because in the last budget process last year, we set up a stabilization fund for special education tuition, and the purpose of that fund was to meet unbudgeted or unexpected costs in special education tuition or transportation. In order to access that, those funds, we need your approval and the school committee's approval. So, a school committee has already approved it, which is why we're now here.
Yeah.
All right, so...
Yeah, let's, you can tell us your story, but I, you can tell us your story if you want, but in my opinion, I move that we allow the access of the $100,000, the stabilization.
I'll second, but let's hear the, the backup behind it before we vote.
Well, we've heard the...
I almost made it out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can tell us your story, but, you know, I don't want you to have to grovel for $100,000. I mean, you know, it's hard enough doing the job you do, you know?
Well, we appreciate it.
We do appreciate that.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, welcome. Okay. So, on top of, you know, the typical issues we have with tuition, the state sets it up in a very interesting way for us. So, when a student of ours moves to another district, another city in the middle of the year, and they are already in and out of district placement, we have to still continue to fund that placement for the next fiscal year as well, even though they no longer live in town. So, that's been something that we've been struggling with in the past, and this year has been pretty prominent for us. On top of it, some reasons for our costs this year are disciplinary placements, and I'm going to talk very quickly, I'll be very swift about each one of them, but about each one of these things, but disciplinary placements of our students with special needs, independent evaluations, and extended evaluations.
All right, we can stop.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So...
So, thank you.
We can go into more detail if you like, but we don't have...
Motion made, seconded.
You can't quite do that, but that's okay.
Well, it was.
Well, he just declared it, he didn't call for the vote.
She seconded it. Mary seconded.
I'm waiting for that, so...
Second.
Thank you, dear.
Again, she seconded.
Any questions for the board at all?
Yeah, when can we get your hearing aid?
That's not in the budget.
That's not in the budget. We're not giving any access to that.
Again, I spoke to Derek about this earlier today. I've always been a very leery about when we take stabilization money out.
Yeah.
Again, in this particular case, we have no choice, because we'd end up with an unbalanced budget, we'd all have problems.
Yep.
So, without anything said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, abstain, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have some equipment you want to get rid of?
I have one more thing. So, since I had your attention...
Lights.
We also have, you may have already received this, but it's a list of obsolete...
Obsolete?
No. We know you're obsolete already.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's not...
Jeez. Rough crowd. Here.
I do actually have this.
Thank you. This is recommended trash. Recommended trash. It's a lot of trash.
Yeah.
So, I think I have it here.
Yeah, move to approve the list, the disposal list.
Second.
Any questions for the board on the equipment?
No.
Evaluations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, abstain, 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Trash is yours.
That it? You're out again?
That's us.
Boy, you spent a lot of time.
I know. Got stopped, huh?
Thank you very much.
Take it easy.
Thank you for your time.
Take care.
Have a good night, everybody.
Next up is the discussion and vote on the Buzzes Bay Coalition Conservation Restriction.
This got fixed, by the way.
I saw that.
Land Trust is going to hold it.
And I'm very happy about that.
Yeah.
And in that case, I, oh, is he going to come up and talk about it?
Don't have to.
I move approval, and I think the chair signs it, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I move approval, and that the chair is allowed to sign the agreement for the conservation restriction with the Buzzes Bay Coalition.
Land Trust.
Alan, you got anything, what do you need to say?
Land Trust.
I very much appreciate the rapidity with which this is being addressed. I would like to just point out, I do actually need all board of selectmen voting in favor.
Oh, okay. There isn't.
Yeah, there is.
Keep looking.
No, that's the conservation...
I have a signature page to hand up, if you'd like.
Take, look at it.
Yes, maybe you're better.
Is there a signature page? Oh, here we are. Okay.
No, no, no.
All right. I got it.
Page 17, page 20. Perfect.
Never mind about Alan, I just moved that we approve this thing. We'll all sign it.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, abstain, 5-0-0. See, that was easy. Sorry, made you wait so long, though.
Thank you.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you very much. And if you, yes, if you could sign it, that would be fantastic. I will notarize it and scan it and get it over to Selectman's office first thing in the morning.
You can sign, you can take it with you.
Sir?
You can take it with you once we finish signing it.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Vote on host agreement on the third and final retail license. We're going to put that off, right?
That's going to be put on hold, just so people know. Mr. Buckland and our town administrator have been working on that, they weren't ready to finish that off yet.
Great discussion on the FEMA plan?
I'm going to ask if Dave Pichette will come before us at a later date.
Okay.
We've had, the maps are available downstairs in the conservation office. These are the final maps, information, et cetera. We had a presentation as well, but I'd like to at least get out to the public where all of it stands. I could give you some donations now.
Next up is, accept from the Wareham Free Library an amount of $5,000. All right, there's two grant acceptance, or...
Two separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got one, Elizabeth Wiley, President of Wareham Foundation. On behalf of the town of Wareham, we're pleased to accept a $5,000 donation to the Wareham Free Library for the purchase of books and other materials. We approve this.
Motion by Patrick, second by Peter, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, 5-0-0.
Next is $5,000 donation to Wareham Free Library for, again, for books and materials. Priscilla Porter, the Friends of Wareham Free Library.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, abstain, 5-0-0.
Okay.
Next, 48 hours.
Next up, I have one for 48 hours. Where the hell's my phone? Hold on a second. Yeah, I do.
Trouble.
I do, I have a 48-hour one. It's only going to, it's no big deal. Let's see, it's in here. Here we go. All right, so, the Wareham Fighting Addiction Committee that meets at the church, you know, over here, that has the, the meeting night on every third, actually, it's on Wednesday, it's the third Wednesday of every month. They want to put a sign out on the bluff out here on Monday, every Monday before the Wednesday.
What bluff?
You know, the little corner there by where the Toby Homestead is, yeah.
A little bump out there? Yeah.
Yeah, a little bump out there. They want to put a sign there on Monday nights.
I'll just make a motion.
Okay. So, I move that we allow them to put a sign out there on Monday, and then they'll take it down on Wednesday.
It's every Monday?
Every Monday, no, the Monday of the third week.
Oh, okay.
Okay? So, just the Monday of the third week.
They'll just be out there for like, three days a month, or whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
Motion by Patrick, second by Tony. Any questions? None here, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0-0.